Okay, so let's call the meeting to order at six oh two P M. And um let's read the minutes from last month. So is Michelle there?
I'm here, yeah. Um library trustee meeting minutes, March eighth, twenty twenty two. Mean call to order six oh five P M. Present Director Jim Crosby, Vice Chair Paula LePedi, Edna Abbott, Denise Conti, Terry LaPrada, Kate Mercer, Michelle Pecos, and Candice Gutierrez. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were read, approved, and accepted. Directors report, the town has lifted the mask mandate, the coordinated family and community engagement. Still requires parents and children in the preschool playgroup to be masked in the activity during playgroup time. All of the programming has resumed in person, all rooms are available for group use again via the application process. The Friends are planning a month-long book sale for May, the community group will be closed during that time to programs and activities. Volunteers are needed for the sale, please let the Friends know if you're interested. New York Life Securities account has gone down twelve hundred dollars in the last few months. Discussion needs to take place about what to do with the account. There is no penalty to withdraw. We have some computers in the building that are getting old and need to be replaced. General, contact security to see what they suggest we do to start a plan to upgrade the computers. Possibly two or three per year can be updated at a time. Landscape and furnishings monies can be used for this purpose. State aid funding can be used only to replace the technologies by patrons. The library has five staff computers and nineteen patron access computers. Warrants eight hundred and thirty six thousand sixty nine cents, Otelco Baker and Taylor Entertainment Entertainment, and two thousand six hundred and forty five dollars and twenty two cents Baker and Taylor Entertainment and Proquest LLC. Motion made by Paula to accept warrants as presented, seconded by Kate, all in favor. Other business discussed what to do in New York Securities account suggested that Jim and Janice have a meeting with Chris Plouer, a financial advisor, to discuss options. C D comes due in August. Discuss duties of Vice Chair position as this will need to be filled by nominating committee with people in June for bylaws, which is the first meeting after town election. Next Tuesday, next trustee meeting, April twelfth, twenty twenty two, meeting in person at library, mass optional. Meeting adjourned at six thirty six P M, respectfully.
Okay, any changes, discussion?
Nope.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes, as you write.
I'll second that one.
Did someone second it? I didn't hear.
Yes. Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jen, you're up.
Okay. Um so our building update, we had to have Otelco come out and fix a phone line that is used for our fire alarm system. Um on Friday, our alarm system kept tripping and sending trouble signals over and over and over again. Finally, the guy called me for like the fifth time and I said, you know, it's not that I don't want to talk to you, but I have other things to do today. Can you just put us on like a hold while we get this fixed? Because it just kept continuing, even after we called the phone company, they're like, oh, yeah, yeah. Just ignore it. I can't. It's like blasting in people's faces as they walk in the door. I was, yeah, it was a hot mess. I was going a little crazy, but that's finally fixed. Uh it was something to do with the line out by the road, so they came and did what they had to do. Um we got a furniture donation from the children's or for the children's room, which was made by Alphabet Soup Day or Child Care. They um purchased a new love seat for the children's room and a cute little wooden table with two little wooden chairs to replace the one that we had that was falling apart. Yeah, so if you have a chance to check it out, it's beautiful. It's really nice. It was so nice of them, very generous. Um thank you notes did get sent out, but I thought I would let the trustees know.
Jen, should I come here as as a group?
Um they usually don't come as a group, but they do participate in our summer reading programs, you know, through the childcare center and um they make a pretty good donation to us every couple of years. They bought the train table for us and um yeah, they've been very generous donations. Yeah. It's looking good in there, although the train table is finally back out again. Um we had that hidden away because of COVID, but now we're able to have the kids play with that again. It's looking like an actual children's room again, which is exciting. Um the C F C has given the Friends a grant to do an outdoor mini garden for the preschool playgroup kids to plant in. So if you're over on that side, you'll see it's a little little squared out space right now. We haven't done it yet, but um we've purchased everything to get it started, so they're gonna have their own little gratitude garden that they're going to be planting in. Putting their cute little gratitude rocks. They all took home little rocks to paint and.
I was gonna say that they're painting themselves and stuff.
Yeah. They've been doing.
It's the C F C.
They're the um it's in our meeting, those are the continued la la la. Coordinated Family and Community Engagement. They're the ones that run our playgroup. They um give us all these grants to do programming and things like that. They're amazing. Um they do our playgroup every Thursday or every Wednesday and Friday. And um yeah, they just, they've been doing some amazing things for the kids. It's great. Nice to see them getting outside again, because they can have more kids. Right now, it's very limited to the number of kids we can have in the room, so take it outside, they can have a lot more room. Um and Janet Hartley, she was involved in the planning of that, so just so everyone knows, we did run it by her. We didn't want to go ruining any landscaping that was already done. Um and she did come and she did our planters for us out there. She's back in action, working hard. Yeah. Um and then a follow-up from library legislative day, I was really excited to get to attend one because it's, they're always happening in, you know, Boston or this or that, and I could never make it to them, so they did it virtually, which was fun. I got to, you know, hear from our representatives about how they feel about library services and it was kind of nice to hear them talk about all the different libraries in the state and all the different ways that people, you know, stepped up to the plate during COVID and, you know, found different ways to provide service and how they were just like really, you know, proud of us and, you know, seeing libraries as a really detrimental part of the community, especially during COVID. So it was nice to hear, and one of the big stressors that they said is that, you know, they don't know to support the libraries unless people are pushing and asking and saying, hey, we could use more funding for all of the wonderful things that you keep saying that we're doing. Because they say, you know, if people aren't supporting and people aren't saying anything, they don't know, so um I sent everybody a link in the email. If anyone has trouble with that, it is a little tricky. You can let me know, um you can come here, I can help you do it. It just sends out like a quick little automated thing with your name on it and your address, saying that you support libraries and you want them to.
I had trouble with it.
Yeah.
I couldn't send it.
It hit the next.
I was able to get my my people, you know, my representative and everything, and then they asked for my address.
Yeah.
But then, then that's where it ended.
There's like, I know, it's kind of tricky. I was doing it with Denise and it's, there's a link at the top of all that that'll say like engage with your legislators. Now, if you click that, it'll bring you to the pre-filled thing that you can send out. But if you need help, you can come here and I can help you with it on the computers here. Um it's just nice to have, and then it shows that, you know, a lot of the Gramby people are chiming in and supporting as well.
Y'all still going?
Yes. Thank you. Um okay, so there's that. The upcoming Friends activities, we already talked about the book sale. I've got things rolling. You can see the sign out there. We're taking in donations, and they're also planning to have a plant sale in May. Um they're looking at May twenty first, just that morning here at the library. Um but they will be talking about that at our next meeting to discuss if anybody's any interest in volunteering. We're meeting on the twenty first, so next Thursday at six, we'll be meeting in here to talk about all of that.
How is the um book sale gonna work?
It's gonna kind of work like it did last summer where it's kind of a self-run, you know, once we get it all set up and it's just gonna fill this whole room. People can come in, pick out what they want, and then come to the front desk to pay.
Okay.
So we won't have to have a volunteer working for the entire month, uh which would be a little difficult. Um I know Sophie had mentioned maybe having that first Saturday, or I should say the last Saturday in April, be like a little preview morning where we could maybe have a couple volunteers working, but other than that, it should be pretty self-run. And then um we might just need a few people to help sort and shift things as it gets sold.
Mm-hmm.
Um to keep it from being a hot mess, because it can get to be a mess. We learned last time. We come in and there'd be books everywhere. We're like, somebody had fun in here, which you can't blame them. If they were having fun with books, I'm not gonna judge them, but.
And they were pretty good, they wanted some.
Exactly, they they were picking through. Um so I'm excited for it. I think, you know, people are really anxious to have another book sale. I've had a lot of phone calls about it.
And it's gonna be the month of May?
Yep, for the whole month of May here.
And you're accepting book donations?
Yes. Yeah, probably for the next couple weeks, um up until like the twenty ninth, we'll take donations.
And you're talking about like needing like volunteers on Saturday, uh all Saturdays or just?
No, probably just the first one, and then we need help setting up.
Okay.
Um we're gonna do setup on Friday, the twenty ninth at three. Um which should probably only take an hour or so, just people to help move the tables and the boxes, the books. But once we get everything set, we'll be pretty good for the whole month. So if anybody has availability and wants to help out.
And that would be like Sept- I mean, April thirtieth?
Um April twenty ninth at three P M.
Oh, okay.
When the kids get out of school. I'm hoping to maybe get a couple of teen volunteers to come in and help and use their muscles. The young ones in here.
Teens know how to do that?
Well, we try, we try. We have a couple of good volunteers, little bookworms like us.
That's good.
Yeah.
Oh Jen, is there any seniors this year?
Um we only have one, um and they haven't, we're not doing the scholarship, if that's where what you were thinking about.
Yeah.
Um I think we're gonna start the scholarship program next year again.
Okay.
Because the kids really haven't had time to put in the number of hours. But we'll make sure that that one volunteer gets like a little gift card at the end of the year, is, you know, congratulations and a thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Um it's on my radar, because we're, it's scary, but we're getting there, like it's almost the end of the school year. What am I gonna do all summer?
I know. Jen, you, anything else on your director's report?
Um I do have one other thing that I wanted to talk about. Um and it involves um this, sorry, I don't have a brain today. This Friday, yes. Um so we have Monday as a holiday, a paid holiday with the town. It's Patriots' Day. And we all get seven hours of holiday time. So what we normally do is we take the Saturday before, which is three hours, and then we have four more hours to plug in. And um I was thinking, because both my staff members want Friday off, and I will be here alone in the building for the day. Well, not alone, but I'll have a volunteer. I was going to propose that maybe we close early on Friday. It's Good Friday. I know it's not a holiday holiday. But a lot of people do close early. Yeah, I know. So I was thinking maybe close the library at like two, two thirty on Friday, give people a chance to get in and get what they need. So give me a couple days to let people know that the plan on it. Um.
Make a flyer or something.
For us to, we have to make a motion.
Yes.
To close, so.
A motion.
Um.
Close early.
Yeah. So I guess if um if you guys are all, if there's any other, you know, questions about it, if not, if someone wants to make a motion. So is it two o'clock giving you guys enough time, Jen, or is it?
Yeah, I think two o'clock would work out. And then.
Okay.
We all get a chance to use our holiday time at the same time, rather than spreading it out during the next week and.
I make a motion that we um close the library at two P M on April fifteenth, twenty twenty two, which is also Good Friday.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Um. Thank you.
Okay, motion's passed.
That will make my.
That was good.
It does make sense.
Right? That would make my life so much easier, because otherwise I have to then give everyone extra time off during school vacation week, the following week, and that's just not gonna be able to happen. We're gonna be crazy. It's gonna be crazy in here.
And just to clarify, is it your close on Friday, Saturday?
Yeah, we're closed on Saturday anyway, so we'll just be a little short Friday.
Saturday, Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's dating for Easter.
Yeah, I know. It's, it all kind of falls in the same weekend, with Easter, Patriots' Day, we got a lot going on, and then school vacation. I'm a mad woman.
That'll be good to get you guys all recharged for school vacation.
Yes, because it's gonna be bananas. We've got all kinds of stuff going on.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and um I will talk to Gloria, because she's my Friday volunteer. I'll see if she can come in and work with me in the morning, and then that way I won't be alone.
So that'll be good. If you're running into problems, Jen, let let us know, so maybe some of us can break it up a little bit, where we could probably come in an hour, like I could take lunch and go for an hour, you know what I mean?
Okay, yeah, it should be, should be able to make it work.
Okay.
If anyone wants to watch my child, though, give me a holler, because she's got Friday off. I mean, like, this is fine. Everyone has Friday off, including my daughter. I can be in five places at once. Right, I know, it's.
Um you talked about computers.
Yeah.
So you're thinking about purchasing some computer, computers for staff?
Yes, yeah, they do need to be replaced. Um I'm thinking like maybe one by one, slowly replace them.
You want them on that ceaseless, that's so horrible.
What's a, what's a computer system cost these days?
Probably between like nine hundred and twelve hundred, depending on.
Just like spot on the street for like that.
You know, like the business desktop.
Mm-hmm.
Um I'm still pricing them out, because we went through Dell before and they've given us some good deals, but then, you know, there's some companies that offer the M H E C discount, which is the Massachusetts um discount.
You just got new computers, H C, and they're.
Jen, have you thought about doing a laptop?
I had thought about it. Um.
I'm thinking mainly for your desk, where you could do a laptop, but you can also hook it to a monitor. Like mine's a laptop and I have a huge monitor. But if you had to work in a different department, like if you had to be out on the desk.
Right.
And it's, oh, you could bring your laptop out there and still do work.
That's true. It might work for me, um but as far as Jean and Janice go, they both need the scanners and the receipt printers, because they do all of the circulating software.
Because you can, you can get a docking station and hook up a large monitor. So when you're in your office, you're not just working off a laptop, you, like I, like I have, you can hook up a pretty good size monitor to it.
I could probably just hook up to the one I have now.
Yeah. You probably could, but.
That'd be cool.
When you're looking at prices, look at that, because this way, if you had to go cover out and you had things to do and it wasn't real busy, you can still do some work out there at least, and if you had to, like even outside.
Right.
You know, if you had to go outside supervise, you know, you can bring your laptop out with you.
Then I can like bring it home with me if I needed to and whatnot. Okay, that's a great idea. You know, I've never thought of that.
It might be something for you to think about, because the price of a laptop compared to a price of a, a computer, it's so close.
Right.
And the convenience of having a laptop or a computer is really good.
Right, and I need to have all the fancy software on it for my budgeting and my, you know, everything. Um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, you know, so think of that when you're looking, because I think it will benefit you out, um having a laptop there.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. Okay, I'll look into it. Um alright, and that's everything that I have.
Okay, so um you have the warrants there? You want to read the warrants off, and Paula's there, so she can sign them for me.
Sure, I have one for five hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents for Baker and Taylor. And then I have one for one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and forty-two cents. And this one is Otelco Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, and a library store.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the warrants.
Um I have, I make a motion to accept the warrants as read.
Second, who's seconding it?
I'll second, Helen.
Helen.
Oh.
Really far away.
You broke out.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll push her closer.
Sign away, Paula.
Okay.
She's like our computer chairperson. Like computer wife from SpongeBob.
Where are we at with the Alice Stewart?
Well, we were just gonna talk.
Yes, you're psychic.
Does anybody have it for under Arthur?
Yes, um Helen has something for the um Alice Stewart Garden.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That is, speak up, Helen.
I finally connected with um Janet Hartley, Blueberry, um and this has been in the last couple days, and we are all anxious and ready and dedicated to completing this uh memorial garden for Alice, because it's been a year. Um we are, Louis is gonna look into um having someone besides Dave move the stone, just because of all the um how do I put it?
Liability, uh.
No, just um disgruntled employee situation with the town. Um and so, given that uh we'll be able to, you know, get rolling. The last time James White had come out here, he, he was, you know, great. He just came, showed up, did everything, and like we were, we were uh raking the stone that same day, you know, thinking this happened, so. Um it's happening, it's happening.
Yay.
Yeah, so soon. So probably next week, or, you know, once Easter's, you know, beyond us, then we'll take it from there and, you know, do whatever we need to do to complete it.
Did you hear anything from him today about coming out and looking?
He just said he was, he said James White was gonna come out and look, so.
Because I noticed the big rock over there has the broken piece detached at the moment. I don't know if they did that or, because it was all.
I think that was done, that was, that was done last fall, when we were doing.
It like keeps teetering.
It broke, remember?
Yeah, it's teetering, yeah.
So I'm not sure what we're gonna want to do with that part, but.
Yeah, that's the other piece, and then um actually Nina was gonna, uh we were gonna talk about getting her son's, uh Dan offered to help um remove some of the stones that are still at Alice's that need to be relocated here.
Oh, nice.
In some cloth or something.
Who was James White?
Um.
Is he the, the, the resource, the resource officer that used to work at night school?
Yes, yeah, I forget the name of his landscaping company, Hollow something.
I didn't know that.
Did you know?
Cool.
He actually came out and helped us, um he stripped the grass and uh helped, uh helped put all that little edging around there.
Hmm.
He was, he was really good.
Neat.
And so that's it for me.
Okay.
Anybody else?
You know, one, one other thing, and I can't find her name. When I went to see you, Paula, there was a woman that was talking to me, and she does something to do with rooting with dogs. And I know we have somebody who does that already, but she offered to come out.
Janice may be the person, because Janice was set up.
Yeah.
But she'd be the, she'd be the point person.
Does somebody still come?
Yes, we do have. He comes two times a month on Wednesdays.
Okay, so maybe we don't need her.
Yeah, we'll have to see what the um popularity is with it and.
And Janice would know that, too.
Yeah. I would definitely link up with Janice and she'll have all that info.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can already look up that day and see who it was, who was there.
Because I put it in my phone and I can't remember.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I saw in the um the minutes last month that we had talked about the V P um position. Um I don't know how much discussion you had, or was it to bring it up in today's meeting to um see if anybody had questions about it or what it entails? Because um next month, you know, we have the elections and the um committee, the nominating committee would have to be chosen next month. Um so we can pick out the new um V P chair and um and secretary to nominate. So um and because I won't be on the ticket, I'll be more than happy to be on part of that committee. But um we just need um you guys to really think about it. You guys have any questions in that, for that position at all? Has anybody thought about it?
So you're gonna be taking her position? So we need somebody to do what you do.
Yes.
Right. So Paula, why didn't you just, I mean, there's really not a lot of work to do, but why don't you just kind of briefly, you know, describe what you've done as a V P, that, you know, that's in case people are interested in um knowing exactly what you do. You know, it's, I know what we have in writing, but not necessarily she does all of that.
Um it was just that there were times when you weren't able to make it to the library and I would come to the library and sign for you, and, because I'd be able to do, I, I'm, I'm able to do that as being the co-chair. And um take over the meeting when Janice wasn't able to make the meeting. Um and the other thing that I would do is fill out, fill out, yeah, yeah. I would fill out the papers. I would get those from the town hall and fill it out on the Thursday or Friday before and go and drop it off at the town, so that it posts a meeting in time for the meeting on Tuesdays.
So the Thursday or Friday before the meeting?
Um Jen actually sends out on Monday or Tuesday before the meeting an agenda to Paula and I. Um I take that and send out the email to all of you, and Paula takes it and writes it up. So um that's where we get the agenda from, from Jen.
So in the past, when I was chair, I would set up the agenda, so I'm not sure if that's something you would like to take on when you step into that role.
I, I, I figure I could talk to Jen, I could come in and talk to you about it and then.
Yeah.
Huh?
Coordinate it, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So.
Yeah.
And then, and then it would be where we would send out an email, you or I, and then the chair, the vice chair can um just write it up on the paper and go and post, uh post it at the town hall, so.
And this can also be set up online, where whoever wants to do it could technically do it through email to them too. You just have to get the um um the, the layout of how they want it, for you to submit it to them.
Like a template?
Have you tried that?
I don't know, it was just easy for me, because I was like right there, so.
Exactly. So, you know, it is something that can be done, you know, through email. Um, you know, if whoever decides they want it, can do it that way.
And when does, when does that position actually start?
June, at the June meeting. That's when you would, um that's when the voting is. So in May, we pick the, the committee. Because we have our meeting before the election, we can't nominate anyone, because we have to wait until after the election. So at the June meeting, that's when the nomination and the voting happens. And then usually I will update um the town hall with who's the uh um the new electees.
Right, so it would technically start in July, for the July meeting, right?
Yep.
Alright, yeah. You know, it's funny, because we have to re-figure this out every single year. I don't know why it's so difficult for me to remember.
Not that you're doing like, you know, generally those places a year, you know?
It's only been thirteen years of doing this, you'd think I'd be able to. You know, it's only been thirteen years of doing this, you'd think I'd be able to figure it out. Yeah, it's okay. We'll just keep revisiting every year. It's good practice.
So, you know, if anybody has any, um. Inkling of they might like it, you know, please let us know. You can let me know for, you know, if you have any questions, you know, reach out to Paula or an I. Um, you know, we can kinda help you with that. It's a two-year, um, commitment as V P and then two years as chair. And I can honestly say as chair, um, I know when Helen probably was many, many years ago. I probably do a lot less than she does, um, there's not a whole lot. Um, going on now, because the library is up, you know, we're not really building, we're not doing a lot of fundraising. Um, Jen reaches out to me, I reach out to her, you know, so there's. Unless there's a crisis, there's not a whole lot that, um, needs to be done. I don't micromanage as chair. Um, like some other, um, people that have in the past. Um, I let Jen run with it and I think she's done a really good job in what she does.
You've had a nice job here for a few years now.
You know, I wish I had more freedom to come in more with you, Jen. You know, it ha- it's, it's hard, cause of COVID thing for the last two years, but. Um, you've done a really good job.
Thank you.
Hats off to you.
Thank you. It is bad, it's been a wild couple of years, but.
Yes, it has.
We're still here. Right, exactly. That's one thing I learned, you definitely have to be flexible. Just roll with it and make it work. We've got this.
So, if nobody has anything else, anybody have anything they need to bring up at all, or?
Alright, next meeting is May ten. And we'll meet in the conference room this time, cause this room will be full of books.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, then my, um, computer went off, so I can't see what time it is. Oh, it's six thirty-four.
Look at us.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting at six thirty-four. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.